I'm Matt Bauer. Did you fire?
Take what else is? Talk loud. We'll call the meeting order at seven o'clock. Stand for the pledge. Sarah, you gonna lead it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Uh, no, I do not have any.
Motion to approve agenda is written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Okay, couple, couple extra things in here tonight. The consent agenda, we have the minutes from our, the last meeting, which was almost a month ago. Uh, the accounts receivable, the golf course comparable. Um, and if you look at the bills for payment, you're gonna have a blue sheet, or a couple of blue sheets. Those are invoices that were paid before the end of the year, okay? Kind of routine, regular, year of the end things. And then the other, the white sheets would be what we've had, you know, since the, the beginning of the year. Um, I know Andrea has a few to point out. Basically, just keep in mind, it's this time of year where we're wrapping up some final things for final bills for a year, and then also, we're paying for annual memberships and things like that, so you'll see a few, a few things like that in there. Um, Andrea, did you wanna point out yours?
Um, just a few that I was trying to point out, um, there's invoices to Golden Main, um, for state routes, as well as street projects. There was, James L. Matters just submitted, um, a few invoices to be paid for their budget amount in twenty twenty one. They didn't get the full five, but they just submitted a little, it's like a little over two thousand invoices in there. Routine, every, at the beginning of every year, we always have bond payments, so there was a bill to Marlin, all of the bond payments for a debt service. And then, like Clint said, a lot of annual dues during the beginning of the, beginning of the year. I will point out, um, Kevin has always had until the end of January to go back any expenses that we can, that need to go into this twenty one budget, so those entries will still be made. Of the deal, DC United already just shy of twenty four thousand, so we go back to twenty one.
So, these accounts payable are for this year's, or are they the ones off of last year's, or a combination of?
You're approving them this year, but there are mixtures in there that will be poured back to that one budget.
Okay.
The, uh...
You'll have some more.
Yeah.
The money that James L. Matters did not use, are we going to allow them to carry that over and give them eight thousand in the future? Are they still capped at five for this year, or?
It doesn't...
We really haven't carried it over in the past.
I can't really carry it over unless it's in a separate, I don't have like a separate fund for James L. Matters, like budget year, budget year, can't really carry it over.
Sarah, make sure they spend all five this year?
Oh, a lot of allotted money goes back into the...
General funds?
Stay in the general one-on-one fund, so I mean, it does go back to the city, but it's just not allotted for anything.
Or even we just stock up on a bunch of American flags or something? Cause you know, eventually we'll have to...
Well, I know that, uh, Arlene, I don't know if she spoke with you, but she did speak a couple of times about a sign.
Yeah, a while ago.
Right, I mean, I don't know if that stuff we would have...
Yeah.
Well, right, but I mean, it's a start, it's a start toward the right thing, I guess, I don't know. Comments, Jim?
Nope. I think you gotta tell it's fifteenth, they get any, is that what you kinda, you said... To get things turned in for last year, I think is what you gave the department heads, right? If I understand correctly?
But I don't actually count the meeting, if they don't have anything turned in.
It goes on this year's budget then, if it's not turned in.
Tell them to get spending it.
You have two thousand or something, you said?
Around three thousand, yeah.
I think you have twenty-eight in there, so probably twenty-one, twenty-two hundred, if it was five thousand.
Yeah.
And that could be used for anything, is that correct?
Um...
We use for something for public.
Public, yeah, public and...
Tell you what, go down to Mr. James and commission a couple artworks. That's not a bad thing.
Do they have to present something to give to the money, or is that where? They just have to bring it in here?
Yeah, just let us know.
Like an invoice receipt, like a buy from the...
See, I've always talked to like Arlene or Reen over the years, or Deanna, you know, whatever, just kinda when things came up, they'd just call and, yeah.
They might as well try to figure something out with it.
You could even go down and prepay some flowers or something for the summer.
Yeah.
You know, whatever you're gonna use, you could prepay something wherever you're gonna get it, and you'd have it when you're ready. There's a lot of creative possibilities.
You got two weeks, a little under two weeks. Jack, I, you, I know you could spend money way faster than that, so it's not an issue.
Says someone who knows it pretty well.
Yeah, I know, it's not an issue.
Mike, most of that's off the record.
No, it's not.
Well, if you like to spend his money, I could take some.
Yeah, we could beautify him.
Jack, you need more than twenty-eight hundred bucks, yeah, that ain't gonna cut it.
That's quite a big task.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just add something to it?
Yes.
One other thing I was gonna point out, as you see in the membership drive, I think Clint handled it with Matt, and his admin recorded well, but, um, on the receivables for this year, this feedback fifty-six, roughly fifty-six thousand dollars, that was what the membership drive was, out there in December, so that was for this year.
Do you have the number from last year's membership drive?
It was forty, it was up by nine thousand dollars.
We were discussing that earlier.
And the last thing, and on next month, I'll probably have numbers for you for twenty-one on audit and done, once I get updated entries done, so...
Next month, not next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Public forum? Mikey, nothing? All right. Otting Communications?
Nothing.
I got mine today, so. Counsel reports?
Uh, the utility board met earlier this evening. They stayed with, uh, John as the gardener, as their chairman, and Mike as their vice chair. The only really, and the discussion that took away with it, that they run a new feeder line, is in a five-year plan, but they're gonna move it up because of some...
Chiller at the school.
Chiller at the school is gonna need more, not sure I'm explaining it correctly, but...
They're gonna need more power.
They need more power down at the school, so while they're doing that, they're running a dedicated line out to Northwoods and the nursing home and that area at, uh, there.
Make sure the folks is not over there as well.
Yep. So, we don't get brownouts. Um, that's just moving up on the...
Capital improvement?
Capital improvement from a couple of years. Um, that was the big discussion, and they approved their, um, oh, what a master's schedule fee.
Yep.
Like we were gonna do later. That was the big discussions tonight.
Carrie?
Nope.
Nothing? Andy?
Nope.
Oh, the EDA met, I don't know, roughly two weeks ago, I don't remember exactly what it was, but, uh, couple things going there. Our new home rebate plan, where we are, I don't know, giving the city tax portion back for five years or whatever. We're actually gonna have to, at this point, we're looking at cutting that out. With the amount of new homes we had this year and applicants, we do not have the funds to continue it. We still have a new home rebate plan with some of our utility hookups and some other things. There is still stuff available for new homes, but that portion of it, at this point, our hands are kinda tied in that fund. In another fund, which is our loan money, we are doing very well and hoping to get people into applying for loans and start businesses, cause we got money in there that nobody seems to, to wanna borrow, where actually, it's been the cap of forty thousand for, since the EDA started.
Yep.
And we discussed, uh, possibly raising that up, looking at maybe eighty or something. None of that matters if nobody applies, it doesn't matter what the cap is, but if there's businesses out there looking for stuff, you know, sure send them to the EDA, because that's what they're for.
Is there any delinquent on our loans?
No, there's not right now.
Been very lucky on that.
Yeah, we've...
Very lucky, yeah.
Considering basically there are no unsecured loans.
You know, and actually, Mike, in all the year, I mean, I don't ever remember a problem with any payments, you know?
No, even ones that went out of business, still made their payments.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. Um, I, we did discuss some into contacting Casey's about the building down there, and about possibly making a deal with the city on that building, possibly for some type of future daycare done with the school. I did personally reach out to Casey's only just today, and I did not get a call back yet, but, I don't know. Just testing the water, seeing, I mean, it's a nice, it's a nice property, and with the stipulations they have on it, you're gonna have a hard time selling it with the stipulations and the price. It would sure be nice to see something done there, so...
What did they put for price?
Three thirty or something.
Okay, that's a little...
But they don't want you to sell anything, I mean, you can't sell anything.
That's less than I anticipated, I figured they'd be four plus.
Yep.
And they might be, they might be willing to nudge.
They might be, I, like I said, I put a call into a realtor today, and that's on the voicemail, basically, it really wants me to email, but that's not my strong suit, so I asked for a call back, and I don't get a call back in a couple of days, maybe I can talk somebody, and email them for me. So, that is EDA.
Whispering Creek, they did have two positive residents test, positive for COVID, and a few, um, they are not showing any signs or symptoms. But they tested positive, so they're isolating, and, you know, they have protocols for that, and they have had a few tests of their, cause they test all their employees once a week, they've had some positive tests there that they've, otherwise, things are going well down there. We haven't had a meeting, but get updates.
How about staff?
Staff has had a few, I think, total of six so far, since they've been testing, that have tested positive. And they've taken their five days, uh, most of them are not showing symptoms, they were exposed and...
Now, which is gonna bring us into something else, but I had a quick question on it, Clint. Would those people be included into our, okay?
Yeah, I talked to Pete.
Okay, we will hit into that here really shortly, update you then. So, is that it for council reports? Administrator?
All right, yeah, there's a few extra ones here tonight, just cause of the time of the year. Um, attached is the December reconciliation from the bank, and then also the cash balance from last Friday. Uh, right before Christmas, excuse me, we received our second half local government aid, which is the correct dollar amount. We also did get the small cities assistance aid, that I think we got some in August, and then we got the second half at the end of December. With that nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, what we do is, we put that into the street reserves, and then Joel can use that for street or alley improvements in the summer months. Obviously, when you get that money in December, you can't really work on a road.
Right.
You know, so we'll do that. Uh, this is also that time of the year, we did receive a property casualty dividend from the, the league's insurance trust. We normally do get some sort of a dividend. This year, the twenty-six thousand, four hundred was the most since, since two thousand twelve. Uh, last year, we got ten thousand, and the, two years before that, we got, you know, between forty-five and five thousand. So, this twenty-six thousand was pretty, pretty significant, so that's, that's a good thing.
What's our total, uh, premium really, deposit we paid in that, for the year?
I'm trying to think, it all adds up to a hundred and forty thousand something, doesn't it? This doesn't, yeah, this doesn't have it on here, I guess. Yeah.
It's good to get a rebate, everybody had a good year then?
Yep.
So, where does that money go then, just general?
Yeah, basically, the league, the league incurred just, just to put it all back into the general fund, um, and don't budget for it, you know, it's just, some years it might be zero, you never know, you know?
There's potential that it could pay.
Exactly, yep.
It's all based on the losses for the insurance companies for the year. Um, I had a question, Jim, since you were talking about that money for the street and alley improvements. We did discuss some about adding alleys into our capital improvement plan. Have we made any strides forward with that, or had Jason look at that at all, or?
Well, not, I mean, we, we'll probably have to be updating our capital improvement plan sometime anyway, I think it was about three, four years ago that we did, so...
Right. Well, maybe just put a bug in his ear when you see him.
It's gotta be coming up to close to five years to update.
Yep.
Okay, continue on, Clint?
Uh, the building permit report, uh, this year's building permits were the best we've had in the last few years. I have the numbers on the report from the last couple of years. This year, we did get, we issued ninety-five building permits, eighteen new homes, which is quite a bit from, if you compare, you know, previous year was nine new homes. Uh, one thing about that, though, is the valuation, uh, more than doubled, meaning the valuation of the work that was done. Um, so that's, that's really important, you know, that helps with your tax base, that helps with everything, so that's a good report. And then Marley also put together, um, on the bottom of that report was the new home permit that Andy was talking about a couple of minutes ago, the, the amount that we spent this year. Um, just a couple other things here, quick, attached to the two thousand twenty-two city council schedule. We'd normally meet the second and fourth Monday of every month. I know over the years, sometimes we've talked about meeting once a month. There are some communities that are a lot smaller than us that meet once a month. But I'm, I'm kinda thinking we should do two a month, especially if we have a street project coming up this summer.
I would agree to stay with two a month.
Yep.
Well, as you said, one once a month, it's twice as long, and...
And sometimes...
And there's times that you can't wait a month on things.
To get a bill paid and stuff.
You get a lag that...
Yep.
I agree.
Exactly, so twice a month is okay?
Yep.
All right. Uh, the membership drive, yes, Andrea has a report in here, talked about it a little bit earlier, but, um, yeah, this year's membership drive was incredible, it's a little over ninety-six hundred dollars more from last year, and last year was a great membership drive. So, you have the numbers there. Um, and then the only, the final thing, I guess I have, is the, the fire department has their annual meeting in the first Wednesday of February every year, the city council members are invited to attend that meeting. So, we put your invite into tonight's agenda here, it's, uh, February second at six P M., or shortly after six P M. Anything else to add about that?
I encourage you guys to come, it's a good time, it's a good time to socialize with all the firemen, and the townships show up, and retired guys.
We'll probably teach you a few things, Jim. We'll teach you a few things.
Well, I'd have to remember them though.
Yeah.
And they do feed...
I'll bring a pad.
We gotta remember to get in there.
They do feed you too.
Well, that's it, is that it right there? Not, not that I care.
Uh, yeah, that's all I have.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, administrator reports?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Department heads? Clint and I have been discussing some things, I think we discussed it with the council at one point, about a schedule to schedule some of them guys to get them here. By the next meeting, we'll have somewhat of a schedule put together, so we can get them here at least once a quarter, get them in front of us. Doesn't seem to work to just put them on the agenda, so...
Now, you have, there's a, in one of those folders for you, Andy.
Okay.
I think it's in there, I'll check before we...
We need to make it clear that it's part of their job.
We're only asking them to come four times a year, we'd pretty much expect...
Unless there's something other, that they wanna discuss with us, that...
They can come anytime.
They can come anytime, but they're welcome, but they are required to come to those, just to, are we doing it, staggering them? Are we gonna have all department heads here, one?
No, we'll stagger them around, so we have...
One per meeting, as long as someone's here.
And I think make it clear that if they can't make it, they can...
Send somebody from their department, or...
Or whatever.
Or even a report for us.
Switch it around with someone else that night.
Yeah, trade, trade nights with somebody else, that's fine.
Uh, just so we, make plans ahead of time that, so we know what's going on and...
In the next couple of weeks, we can probably get a schedule put together, I think?
Yep, I would think so.
Like, clear expectations would help with that.
Good. So, old business, this is our sec policy that we were just discussing?
Yeah, we, uh, so, basically, since the onset of COVID, we have basically had a policy here, where full-time employees can receive up to eighty hours of leave if they need to quarantine for themselves or family, you know, whatever quarantine requirements there are. They will receive up to eighty hours of leave without taking it out of their own personal time. And when we had the CARES Act involved, that was okay for law enforcement, uh, nursing, public safety. And now with the rescue plan money, that is allowed for anybody who needs to quarantine.
All city employees.
So, I, I called Pete Maddle about it, and, and Pete actually said, "That's awesome, thanks, I love that idea." So, he was very happy that we offered it to nursing home staff. I will say, however, though, there's been a couple of times here where someone was quarantined, but it was a workers' comp situation because they were at work when it happened.
Any public safety...
That has nothing to do with this policy.
Any per, public safety is presumption of, that's work comp issue.
So, attached is, uh, Andrea, thank you, she did a lot of work on this too. We, we did get a couple of policies from different cities, the league helped us with this a little bit. Um, basically, it calls for the same thing, you can receive up to eighty hours, beginning March of two thousand twenty, when the pandemic began. And then, when your eighty hours are up, you're allowed to use vacation sick, or if it is needed, you can have FMLA, which has obviously been a federal law for thirty years, you have to offer FMLA. So, um, that's what this policy is all about. You have any questions about it, it's...
Are we giving them some type of credit when they're working from home? Obviously, I know when you were quarantined, you were still working.
Yeah, um...
We were still on the phone all the time.
And that, and they are allowed, if they're able to work from home, they can work that out through their supervisor, and then they want to use...
It wouldn't count against the eighty, okay?
It's in here somewhere, Andy. I thought. E? Yeah, or those who are able to tell to work can make arrangements with their supervisor, yep.
Okay.
And B, it says, uh, one time each, uh, are there instances where a person may have to quarantine more than one time? And I'm not sure that that is a legitimate thing to have in there, they may have to, uh, access this more than once.
Oh, it's, that's very possible, yeah, um...
I think that, that maybe is too restrictive for us. If someone is mandated because they come in contact with someone else, even if they've had to be out because they had the COVID or they were contaminated, and they have to come back, but then they have to go out again, I think we need to revise that one time each.
Oh, just the, the phrase one time, cause you know, you could go, in one instance, you could be forty hours, the next instance, you could be twenty-four hours, depending on what your five-day CDC thing is.
Right, right.
Um, so, should we just say, without going against a person?
Up to eighty hours, just take out the one, one...
One time use, take those three words out. That makes sense, yeah.
I think that's too restrictive, in case they don't use the eighty in, in one time, they've got some room yet. That's the only thing I saw that...
Can I clarify that, so if one employee uses an eighty hours?
So, they're out for, first time they're out for, they have to quarantine for five days, cause their kid or something is exposed, and they have to, and six months later, they have to quarantine again, they still have forty more hours they can use.
Oh, yeah, the eighty hours is cumulative, right?
Right, but it says, one time each, if you read that, you could read that as, it only happens once, that's what Jim is saying. Yeah.
You know, you have to...
No matter what, they get their total of eighty.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't argue with the total of eighty, I'm just saying that they might not access that in one...
Make sure they get their total if they need it.
They might not, not access that in one instance, so, I, you're, you're dealing with it though?
Yeah, we'll just take that.
Pretty much draw a line through that, and away we go.
Not the whole thing. Yeah, just so we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, basically, looking for a motion from the council to approve this as amended.
I would move that.
Second.
Okay, who's second?
Andy did.
You can't go wrong, Andy did. All in favor?
Fifty percent.
Aye.
Aye?
American Rescue Plan?
You guys are gonna love this. So, as of last week, uh, when I put this, when we put the agenda together, we have spent about forty thousand dollars of our rescue plan money. Um, we still do not have final invoices for, you know, the city hall improvements, obviously, it's not all done yet. I hope to get that to you in the next couple of council meetings. But what I want, what I wanted to do tonight is just give you a list of the U.S. Treasury guidelines as to what you can spend the rescue money on, and then there's also a couple sheets that, uh, that came from the League of Minnesota Cities. I do point out that the U.S. Treasury has a forty-plus page document about the details of how to spend the money, I did not copy that for you. The league also has a big document, I didn't copy that for you. And then today at four o'clock, I got an email, the U.S. Treasury has updated their guidelines. So, why don't you just read that list, it's pretty darn accurate, but as of four o'clock today, it changed a little again, so...
What's our timeframe that this money needs to be spent?
You have a couple of years to spend on it, yeah.
So, we've got some time to do creative and...
And the first report is due April one.
And what does that report do?
Just to report on what we spent.
On what we have spent so far to date.
What we spent it on.
It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't project, it simply, uh, tabulates what we've used.
What we spent, yep. So, you know, if you wanna go through that, it, it kinda gives the broad guidelines of what we can spend things on, and now, obviously, like I say, today, the details changed a little bit. So, if you have any specific items or things you're thinking of, let us know, and we'll take it from there. I mean, I've been working with Jason Moran on a lot of this since March of two thousand twenty, even with the CARES Act money, you know, we were constantly talking about, are we sure we can spend the money on that, so...
This is pretty broad.
Mm-hmm.
You look at this, it's pretty general, broad, all the way from, from, uh, daycare to loans and grants.
Yep, exactly.
So, I think that we could come up with some very creative ideas.
Good. We do not wanna give the money back. There are cities that have been doing it, not spending their money and giving it back.
I suppose.
See, I just kinda reviewed that.
We've got things we can find.
We'll find some.
Oh, yeah.
How much was our allotment?
Um, last year, we received...
I think it was about just shy of like two hundred and thirty thousand.
So, last year, we received about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, this year, we'll receive that again. So, we're gonna get about two forty-six. It, it bumped up a little with that last, last fall.
Give or take, right?
Yep, yep.
And we spent...
Just about a quarter million, we'll say, how's that sound?
And we spent about a hundred and twenty, I'm guessing, or?
No, like, well, you mean, with, with the, probably.
With the CARES Act money.
With, uh, flooring and stuff.
Flooring and, uh, air...
Yeah, that was fifty-something with the air and...
So, you're thinking about a hundred and twenty, this may have been used.
Yes.
I would ballpark that.
Give or take, yep, all right, so we got about a little over half left.
Yep. And one thing we can use it on is, uh, utility improvements, so when we do the street project next year, we could use some of this money to help pay for, you know, sanitary or storm. And that would, that would decrease the assessment.
I think that's another thing.
Yeah, I think we should put some thought into...
Sure, we got, yeah, and we do, like I said, we have time to...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't jump to that right away.
Any questions on the American Rescue Plan?
Are we gonna have a work session on, uh, this, like, the next year sometime, or?
We certainly could, Jim.
Next winter possibly, so we've got some thoughts and ideas, and then we could brainstorm, and, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Give us some time to work this through our own minds, and then either midsummer or next winter sometime, just kinda get some ideas, and then list some things that we possibly would be coming up with, and then we as a, as a group can contemplate that and bring them forward later.
Yep, that's a real good idea.
Maybe put that on the July agenda, and we'll, uh, discuss it then.
Or maybe even sooner.
Yep, whatever you decide to bring it forward.
Brand-new year. Brand new year, brand new Jim, all of his ideas. This is good.
You know, I fell down.
Yikes. You're coming fresh out of a nap, weren't you?
It's a possibility that I'm out of my head.
So you don't really
Don't really need any action, you know, tonight, yeah.
That's just an information, eh?
Yep.
Annual appointments.
Yes, um, these are the annual appointments that we need to by law make every year. We do that at the beginning of the year. The, the only blank we have is who would like to be the acting mayor. I can type that in and then print it out, Andy, you and I can sign the resolution then. When the, when the meeting is done. I'm gonna correctly spell the word bulletin though. Bulletin board.
Why you didn't correctly spell the name Arnold's on the agenda?
Where? What happened?
Bottom of the agenda.
Business five.
Oh, you have too many letters in your last name anyway. I was in a hurry. So who would like to be acting mayor? Uh, this past year was Melissa. Correct?
Any volunteers? I disappoint somebody if nobody volunteers. Oh, Andy volunteered.
Yeah, I saw you got there.
No, I did not.
I saw it.
I did too.
I even spelled your name right, Andy.
Well, you already put me in there.
You're in?
It doesn't matter.
That's as good as any.
Sure. Thank you for your service to this community, Andy.
He's extra.
Yeah. Other than that, we're good with the appointments?
Everybody okay? Have any questions? Or I'll print this out here, Andy, so we can
Okay.
I'd move these appointments as listed.
I'll second it.
I've never seen one, huh?
All in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
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 Um, next would be the council reps, which I believe is basically up to me. I don't know, it's, if nobody objects, it's only been a year on most of our stuff. It'd be nice to, I know, I'm on the EDA and we're just really getting rolling with things. If everybody wouldn't mind just keeping their same ones for a year again. I know we need to talk to Melissa and she's fine with the EDA again, so. If that works, we'll just keep everybody the same.
And then I do have one question to ask about that. Um, the Jim, you and I have talked about this a couple of times. I have to find it. The Park Road Plaza, where we at?
Yeah, you misspelled their name, but other than that
Um
Oh, Park Road Plaza, I thought you just talked Park.
Yeah. So we, for many years, obviously, the Park Road Plaza Board has five members, and for many years, the city council rep was a voting person on that board. I've heard different options about that here in the last month or so. I, I did do a little research and when the HRA was originally established in the eighties, the city council appointed five residents. There was not a council member that voted. Um, would, does the council want me to kinda look in that? To see if that is allowed to have five people? Jim, you can still go to the meetings.
How do you prefer it, Jim? You've been going to the meetings for the last year.
Uh, according to the description in the book that I read, the council member is a voting member.
Yeah.
From the description that I read of it, so I think I should be a voting member, cause they're having difficulty getting a quorum from time to time.
Okay.
And if you made me a representative and a voting representative, then we can get a quorum much more easily.
Okay.
That was my concern more than anything.
Sure, so we'll keep it as is then?
Okay.
And I'll be a voting member.
Yeah, yes.
I think, I, yeah, I think that's where we should go.
Okay.
And everybody's good with their appointments?
Yeah, back to that, housing redevelopment, I think we should make sure that that's been changed since originally, so it's documented that he is a voting member.
He is a
Make sure that's done right.
I mentioned it to them at the last meeting.
I don't think there's any problem with it, but just make sure it's in the paperwork that it's right.
And they understood, and I, I described to them that I thought I'd be a voting member. When I was put on there, I, I was, I was understanding that I wasn't, and they were very receptive for the same reason that I was. It's easier to make a quorum.
Here?
Yep.
Which one are you looking at? Yeah, so you and Melissa.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the council appointments as they were last year.
I can't remember.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 You? Master fee schedule?
Okay, uh, beginning of the year, we adopt the master fee schedule, like Mike was saying, the utility board did it tonight as well. Uh, the items in the, in yellow are the changes for tonight's council meeting. The last time the council updated this was last October. And really, the biggest significant changes in this fee schedule is next summer's, or I should say this summer's, uh, rates at the golf course. You know, we updated those obviously. And then a couple of other minor things here and there. Uh, Mike, you had asked once upon a time about civil standby. That's in there now, as you can tell. You probably saw that, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The sidewalk removal, that's snow removal, right?
That's the snow removal nuisance deal that we talked about, yep?
Yep.
Uh, on the last page of additional bartenders, ten dollars doesn't pay much for a bartender. I think that should be twenty dollars. The last item on your, on your schedule, ten dollars doesn't buy much of a bartender.
Okay.
I think that should go to twenty. Other than that, I didn't see any discrepancies that I would change.
It's in yellow. What was it before? It was ten dollars?
It was not written. It wasn't there, yeah.
Okay.
That would be a good time to add. I mean, they had a festival there this last year.
Yeah.
Had a wedding out there, that was kinda right.
I think that's going to increase as the time goes by. There will be more events and so
Okay. So then, am I understanding that with the change of the fee for the additional bartender, that maybe Jim is gonna make a motion to approve the fee schedule?
I will. I will. You read my mind.
The fee schedule, including
I was desiring to do it. Fed right into that desire of mine.
I'll second Jim's motion, including the change of the bartender per hour fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, safe routes to school.
So we have two items to talk about here. Um I have this on the, and I have this on the screen, which will help, I think. Um, as you do know, the, the property owners that we approached about purchasing some land, were not interested in, in selling the land or having an easement on the land or on that property, so we took an alternative approach here was to put the put the safe routes path on the west side of the creek, which means it has to cross the creek one more time.
This is Allen Circle. So if you can kinda picture just north of Allen Circle, I have to go across the bridge, or I'm crossing a creek.
We're adding a bridge.
Adding a bridge, and that engineer estimates fifty-four thousand dollars to add on to this safe routes program. So I'm asking the city council tonight, do you want to add that to the safe routes program and hope like heck we get the state grant for local matching? Or do we if we don't have the grant, I mean, we have to pay it, or do we not do that fifty-four thousand dollar option and, and keep it on the west side of the creek like we originally planned? Entirely up to the council.
There's another option out there. I don't like using it.
We don't have time, you mean like in a mental vein?
Yeah, I don't think we have time.
Do we have time for it?
I don't know what the time process is. I, I really hate to use that option.
Right.
In my opinion, fifty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money to please, you know, a small amount of the community when we're asking for all of the community to pay that. Hopefully, the people in Allen Circle understand we did look into alternative routes. Just at this time, they're not really available to us. My opinion would be to keep it as we had originally planned. But
Where, where would the if we didn't get the grant for that, where would that money come from? I guess is where my question.
That's the next big question. Yep, come out of general fund, yep.
That's slated for this fiscal year, right?
Yes, yep.
I don't think we can
I think we can put that
Everybody's paid for that and I, I think with I don't think it's feasible to
I don't think it's feasible to stick fifty-four thousand into a budget that we didn't plan for.
Right now.
When we've already started that fiscal year, I just, I don't think it's feasible.
Mm-hmm.
Can we move forward and try and get a grant and it doesn't work? Are we past that point?
No, no, the grant is due actually at the end of this week, so
But how we submit our plan is how we submit it. If we don't get the grant, we still have to do it this way.
So we have to make the decision tonight?
Decision tonight.
Well, I would prefer because, I mean
I mean
No offense, but we've gone to a few different alternatives here in the last few months, you know?
Right.
And I get it, I mean, residents were concerned. They, they approached their city council
I'd love to be able to do it.
Well, they definitely went about it the right way with, with how they came to us and
I feel the council did what they could with other options.
So the owners of that property are completely resistant to letting go on, uh, what is it? Nine tenths of an acre? No.
Two tenths.
Two tenths of an acre.
Two tenths of an acre.
Yes.
Seriously.
I contacted them personally.
Really?
They just aren't interested.
Wow.
I was quite surprised, but
Cause two tenths of an acre, that's like one row.
Yeah, it's maybe one row on
One row, and, and heck, the weeds will take that.
It's a big rock pile. In the corner of a field.
Yes, I mean, intimate domain would be an option if we had more time, which we don't because of our plan being due and
Really would like to help them and accommodate them, but I, I, geez, like you say, fifty-four thousand dollars is a pretty good chunk of money. You think of the different things around town that could be done for fifty-four thousand dollars.
Moving back to, uh that's something we can
I don't think so. I know your question.
Can we take it out of
Address negative economic impacts and fall into
We used about half of what we got.
It doesn't, frankly, to me, it doesn't matter where we take it out of, we're still taking fifty-four thousand dollars away from the entire community to benefit a half a dozen homes. Doesn't really make a difference where it comes from, even if it came out of grant, frankly.
Yep.
We're still taking it away from the other residents.
I can live
And I apologize to the people in Allen Circle there, but I, our hands are somewhat tied, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm. So I would say then, that what I'm hearing is that we will not consider this alternative and we'll go to the original.
That would be my motion, is to go to our original plan. And not consider the alternative bridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Three, one? Thank you.
Okay, and then the second
Understand.
Yeah. The second item with safe routes is, um, with this grant application that I'm talking about, part of the requirements for the grant is that the school district and the county commissioners and the city council need to adopt a resolution, you know, supporting the, the grant. This is, Mike, you'll remember, this is basically the exact same resolution we adopted a few years ago. The county met last week and adopted theirs, the school is meeting tonight and they'll be adopting their resolution tonight, so we'll just I'll collect all these and send them to, to Jason.
Because of our population, the county has to be on board with us also.
Correct.
They have no financial
Right.
Responsibilities in it, but they still have to sign off on it because we're under five thousand people.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Resolution zero three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this will be your acting mayor?
And the last item, I'm gonna turn it over to the acting mayor as I have somewhat of a personal stake in.
Wow, look at that.
Here we go.
Should've known.
You wanna sit over here?
No.
Thanks, and I'd have to sit next to him. Looking like rage.
Uh, item number five is, uh, going over the liquor license for Arnold's Good Spirits. And says that Sarah Arnold has applied for a liquor license for Arnold Good Spirits located at six oh one East First Street. License is for, uh, off-sale liquor license.
Is that the one that's in, that exists there right now?
That's where it's currently at. We are looking at moving it back to the old location. But right now, this license is for the current location that it's at.
And then part of the process for liquor license applications is the background check is done, which Dave complete, Dave Alman completes, our chief. So in, in the, uh
I'll make a motion to approve pending all state approvals, right?
Yep.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
And then obviously you abstained, right?
Yes, I abstained. Pass is three oh. Three oh one. Three oh one.
Three one one, three one, because Moses is one. I'm not here.
So that's why I didn't run for mayor.